We should be good to go now.
All right, welcome everybody to the November twentieth planning board meeting in Bellingham. Start the meeting by taking attendance with board members and service attendants and we'll start with to want to start with Marty.
Marty Rhodes.
Bill Connell here.
Elizabeth Webb.
Okay, so we're all here and you guys can join me with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, not a God, indivisible, with liberty, which is absolute for all.
All right, so start by opening up the continued public hearing on one eighty Payne Street. I could have a motion to open up the continuums.
So moved.
So moved. And we have a second by Bill.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, motion made by Marty, seconded by Bill. Start the vote with Steve.
Steve I.
Liz I.
Bill I.
Bill I.
Marty I.
All right, so it's five zip. We're up open right now. Believe we've got our peer review on right now.
Yep, Pete Engel from P E C is on, so.
Okay, on Zoom, and we've got the applicant. The applicant would like to join us?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chin.
Believe we were going to work on civil and stormwater.
Yeah, we have the the peer review back, so I think it would probably be helpful to have the peer reviewer just give a high level overview of his findings, if there's any questions, comments from the applicant or the the public. Yeah, while the while the applicant works on responding to these.
Peter, do you have the the ability to present at this point? Do you have a doc? Do you want to go over the document or if you could hit the thirty thousand review of the document that we're all looking at November twelve?
There, yeah, I can kind of go through this. I mean.
Great.
There is. And not not to say that it's because the plans are not adequate. It's just it's a big project and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of regulation to go through, so. Kind of just try to stick to the the bigger issues. You know, there's there's smaller things with plans indicating building square footage and whatnot. But to, you know, in our opinion, some of the bigger items, so obviously we we didn't see where they would be, but also zoning by law requires a trash location refuse disposal. We didn't see any of that. Bicycle parking. Some of these, you know, more zoning bylaw related plan requirements, so there's really two or three kind of major issues that we saw. The first one we can start with is kind of that road A subdivision. So the subdivision bylaw indicates maximum grade of eight percent. There's a section of that road A that they have designed at ten percent. And also, you know, it doesn't look, it doesn't look like they're proposing to upgrade the portion of the existing golf course driveway, which would become part of that roadway. Not sure. It's it's probably unlikely if that would comply with the subdivision requirements. I guess that that would be up to the board if that would have to be brought up to standard. But that would be kind of one of those major issues would be that that just the design of that road A, whether it's going to be public or private or whatnot, but it should still comply with subdivision regulations. The flood zone that's shown on the plans. You know, they indicate that it's an elevated flood zone, but it doesn't match up with the elevations from the FEMA mapping that should be a relatively easy fix, but kind of an important one to to get correct. It it doesn't look like any of the work was within that flood zone, but good to show an accurate floodplain on the plans. As far as sidewalks and pedestrian access and whatnot. So there's a portion, there's there's two driveways into the development from road A. One of them has a sidewalk on one side. The other one doesn't have any sidewalk. Which I we would think they they both would. I think the subdivision regulations call for sidewalks on both sides of collector streets, whether road A is going to be considered a collector road and have sidewalks on both sides. That road A has sidewalk on one side. But also just ADA compliance throughout the site. You know, they have it designed pretty flat and likely is not difficult to get the ADA parking and walkways and everything like that ADA compliant. There's just a lot of kind of plan errors with whether curb ramps aren't proposed, they are proposed, reciprocal curb ramps aren't proposed, detectable warning panels aren't there. Crosswalks are five feet wide, I think. Per federal highway and MUTCD six foot width would be minimum. We typically see eight feet where where there's more traffic. Certainly, the crosswalk on Payne Street, which is within, you know, the the public right of way should comply with public right of way accessibility guidelines. So I think that's more of just the engineer going through all the all the pedestrian access and making sure everything is is ADA compliant as necessary. There's no phasing plan for the project. It's a, obviously, it's a large truck, large project. It would likely be phased. I think a phasing plan being included would be a good idea. Also required by zoning by law. Back to kind of subdivision regulations and road A and even the other roads which are supposed to meet the subdivision regulations. There's no profiles for any of the streets or road A or or the driveways. Soil borings or test pits within the roadway itself. Cross sections of the roadway. Whether sub drains for for roadway integrity to keep groundwater from leaching. Which there most of the parking and and roadway doesn't appear to be within estimated season high groundwater, but there are some sections where we noted it, which those should have under drains more than likely. Again, the the maximum slope of road A grades at intersections. Where road A intersects with Payne Street, I mean, it is Payne Street's existing topography is pretty steep, so it ends up, you know, that in a portion of that intersection ends up being over six percent. Which in order to get that below the four foot max would probably take some redesign of Payne Street, which might not be practical, but just noting that and and the engineer should take a look and see, you know, see what can be done there. Same with the intersection with the existing golf course roadway. Whether or not that can be brought into that four percent compliance or not. Again, sidewalks on both sides of collector streets. Is just there's there's some construction details which should likely be added, which one of these, you know, the the roadway cross section, the pavement depth versus the parking lot cross section is just some discrepancies there that should should match up. Accessible parking spaces, so the the number of spaces provided was based on a site total. Which may or may not meet that ADA A A B requirement. We would just, we would expect, you know, the the number of parking spaces at each building to match those required for for those particular units. Rather than kind of the same number of spaces at every building, so like building A and building E have different number of units, but they have the same number of spaces, whereas building E should probably have more. I think there's only four proposed now. There should be six or seven based on the number of units and number of parking spaces provided. Let's see, what else? Again, just providing some more grading information. Where those handicap parking spaces and ADA access locations are, just to confirm ADA compliance. And then more kind of minute drainage stuff, but there are some some big drainage issues that we noticed. The biggest one being groundwater. I mean, there are three 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 of the stormwater detention systems infiltration systems don't appear that they had soil testing done in the footprint of them. I think per the per the local bylaw, each one is supposed to have three test pits. Which you know, at almost all the soils out there by the soil logs in the in the boring's done, appears to be pretty consistent. Groundwater appears to be pretty consistent around ten feet. But those three didn't didn't have any test bits, which they really should. And then the majority of these underground infiltration systems appear to be designed within groundwater. Which per the state regulations, you need a two foot separation per the town's groundwater protection overlay regulation, you need four feet. So whether you know, how how they decide to address that, whether those systems are made into line detention systems and infiltration is provided elsewhere, or those systems are made shallower or, you know, relocated. That'll be a big kind of that'll that'll be the biggest plan change moving forward to to figure out the the groundwater separation, in our opinion. You know, the the stormwater design includes particle separator units for water quality. There's two different models that are in the plans for construction details, but the plans don't actually indicate which model goes where and and whatnot, and those are those different models would address water quality for different flow rates and so different amounts of water, so that needs to be clarified. There's one of the one of the subsurface systems. Appears that it has more than the maximum cover. That's indicated by the manufacturer. One of them looks like it doesn't have enough cover for being under pavement, so those are kind of other minor issues in in relation to the groundwater that'll have to be addressed. And then lastly, just some some peak flow analysis issues. One of which it it's a routing issue, so the existing model includes routing of a certain area to the vernal pool. Whereas the post post development doesn't doesn't include them going to the vernal pool. I believe still going to the ultimate analysis point, but it it's just something that should be fixed in the in the routing diagram. And then a few of the the sub catchments appear that they're probably lacking more area that would would actually be directed towards those subsurface systems. And it it looks like there's one area where I believe it's adjacent to building E, E or F that the grading is actually creating a low point. Like up upgrading of the parking area. But the the watershed maps show that that area draining to a wetland, but in order to get to that wetland, it would have to go uphill first, so whether there's additional drainage design that we didn't see as part of the golf course plan or just a just an oversight there. And then yeah, lastly, back to the the four foot offset the high groundwater based on the the local bylaw, I think is going to be the biggest the biggest issue with with all the stormwater design, really. That's kind of a high overview. Going through the the more the more kind of major issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Okay. And does the applicant had a chance to see this?
Yes.
Okay, so you have seen it, okay. Are there questions from the board?
Steve?
Not at this time, but I will.
Okay. Liz?
Not right now.
Phil?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the current slope is on Payne Street. You had said they were looking at eight percent. What is the current slope there right now?
I don't know what the slope of existing means figures off the top of my head. I can I can get that information for you.
Okay.
I just don't know. What was the question?
What is, they talked about the slope of eight percent. And the requirements should be more than that, I believe.
So the the zoning bylaws require that for this overlay associated streets need to meet our subdivision requirements, which have a maximum eight percent grade.
Yeah.
So the proposed roads within the development would need to meet that, or they can request a waiver.
Okay.
Which would go in front of the planning board. So the the existing grades of Payne Street are don't fall into that category.
I misunderstood what they were saying.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fair.
Yeah, I guess to to kind of clarify my my comment on the Payne Street, it's the the existing topography of Payne Street kind of affects the inner that that proposed intersection. Whereas the inner inner per the zoning per per the subdivision regs, intersections are supposed to have a maximum grade of four percent. But that's likely not possible without a significant redesign of Payne Street, a reconstruction of Payne Street. But it was just kind of seeing if the applicant could look at look at that intersection a little bit more and see if there's there's anything that could be done.
Second question. Page I. Report number twenty three. Will we get additional information on the water line size?
May, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
And page seven out of fourteen. E under forty tooth. Is that a concern with the different test bit numbers? Of two hundred to two oh four?
Um.
Right, so that basically that comment is part of the larger comment in that some of those or the majority of those subsurface systems are designed within groundwater. So currently, that that system is designed for four feet below groundwater. So that will have to ideally, it would be four feet above groundwater. So there's kind of a significant elevation issue there.
Okay. And the last question from me is on page thirteen out of fourteen. Number sixty four. Regulation two forty five fifteen D dash one regards to string storm drain discharge. Do you amplify that a little bit more?
Sure, so at at the proposed intersection of road A with the existing golf course driveway. There's a there's an existing catch basin on the golf course driveway, which is intended to remain, but a new a new outlet pipe is proposed in that pipe base. It it probably matches what it's doing now. It probably just discharges out into the into the woods and into a stream. But that that same scenario is kind of being proposed here, whereas this this pipe is just being proposed to discharge out out onto the hill and into that intermittent stream without any kind of treatment or detention first, which for for redevelopment kind of matching existing conditions could be allowed under the state's regulations, but that, yeah, it appears that that that's particular subdivision regulation would kind of prohibit that that design.
Thank you. Marty, any questions?
Not quite, it was just major concern about the ground rather rekindling the four foot barrier that we're not meeting there. I mean, it's been brought up that this end town with the water resource district and the fact that there's a lot of wells within that area. That's a major concern of we can't, we can't do anything with our aquifer. We have to meet the standards, the highest standards that we can to protect everyone in our community. So that is definitely something on my radar. It was highlighted when I printed my first copy of it. It was like, all right, we 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 gotta make sure that you guys understand that that's a no brainer.
Yeah.
In my mind, that's not even a talking point.
Of course, I can speak to that at the high level when you folks are all done.
That was that was my biggest. I mean, some of the others, I'm still reading through and comparing the map and go through the drawings, because there's a lot here.
Yeah, I agree. So a lot of my comments to make by peer reviewer, Marty versus staff here. There's a lot, there's a lot here, and you know, the hydrant loops, fencing around detention basins, I don't think came up. You know, four foot at the water level separation between infiltration systems, and there's a lot here and it keeps going. I I think it's a it's a pretty thick document with a lot of concerns on it. Like to address some of these?
Yeah, it's at a at a high level. So first off, thank you for the review. It's very thorough. It's a big project, as was mentioned, so we appreciate that. I think the majority of the comments of detailing, which we can provide, I think the major comments that we had heard was a slope on on road A. We can take a look at getting that down. It just reduces some earthwork. It makes it better interfaces, which is why we proposed it at ten percent. If that is something that is desirable, we can reroute that road to be eight percent, which would address a lot of the comments. The other big comments we heard had to do with groundwater. I think a lot of the issues with that are some additional testing that might be needed to put some of those comments to rest. A lot of times when you dig a a test pit, if you stop at a certain depth, that's what you call groundwater, even though groundwater is deeper than that. So I think we'll have to do some additional testing to show some of those areas. So we'll take a look at that. We worked very closely with the geotech engineer on that. But we'll provide that information and the intent is not to put drainage in in groundwater, but I think we need to clarify that with some potential additional testing.
Does there a mistake on forty two with those seasonal high groundwater?
Think the way when you when you dig a test pit and say the test pit goes ten feet, you're supposed to call the bottom of the hole ten groundwater at ten feet. That's what you say, even though you didn't hit it. It's it's just what it's what you do. So we'll can do some
Do some more.
We can do some additional one. Sometimes the issue becomes how deep do you have to dig and you have a different piece of machinery that goes out there. But we'll get with the geotech engineer to to just make sure we're providing all of that information. If something needs to get modified, certainly modify it, but if additional information needs to be provided to show some of those areas, we can certainly do that. So that is something that we would plan on addressing and coming back, but the intent is not to show drainage sitting in in groundwater. So clarify it or make any modification there. And that's that's really it. Those are two of the I call it the big highlights beyond that. Looking through the comment letter, there's just a lot of of detailing we could certainly address. Again, sometimes with a project of this size, you don't want to go in with all of the exact construction level detailing, because you know, you're getting peer reviewed, you know, you're getting a bunch of comments, and then you're doing that level detail multiple times. So kind of going through this, getting your comments, getting the peer reviews comments. We can then sit down and provide some of that information that's being requested. One thing I would like to ask the the board and 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 Rob. What may make sense is when we go through that in detail and we have our thoughts on, hey, this was our plan to address this. This is what we were going to do here. So what we're going to do there. It might be good to have a conversation with Rob and the peer reviewer before doing that, coming back to you, getting a new comment letter just to hopefully go in with something that addresses the majority of the of the comments. So I think that was something that would benefit us. I think it would benefit you in the long run to save the back and forth if that was something you were memorable to.
You see this as a major needing a major redesign because of the fact that, you know, seasonal high groundwater and all the core comments that were made, or do you think more testing?
No, I don't. I don't see a major redesign based on this, but we can certainly provide some information and if there's any tweaks that are need to be made, we can make it.
Okay, and I haven't seen a waiver list request at all, so assuming until there's a waiver request, there are no waivers, right?
We can certainly address. We can address that with the flavor of the board, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on this topic?
Just one more item. I know, Peter, you had mentioned it, the intersection, the entrance at Payne Street with the four percent. And I don't understand it. I read it. I didn't know it, and then he's bringing.
I can explain it. So to it confused me if I, so say you have a road that you say Payne Street, Payne Street is at a slope like this, say it's six percent. And the proposed road is supposed to be four percent for a certain distance. I think what Peter's saying is you just can't comply the intersection of a whole because Payne Street is greater than four percent. So essentially, every intersection in the town of Bellingham that is on a roadway greater than four percent doesn't comply. So typically, what you do is the proposed street that you're constructing at that time. So again, our our road A, you make that slope four percent. But, you know, you're not going to go back and necessarily reconstruct every every road in Bellingham to to comply with the existing grade of four percent. So I think what Peter's saying, can you take a look at that? Is there something you can do to Payne Street or not to try to flatten that out or not?
And equal the four percent going into road A?
Yeah, road A we control, right?
Right.
Road A, we consider whatever we want. That that that's easy.
Okay.
Payne Street's harder because it exists.
Yes, right. So what to do with that? I mean, the intersection is being rebuilt because of the widening.
It's the wide, yeah.
The widening there and that, so definitely that. I mean, how do we mitigate as much as possible?
Yeah, I think I think that's what Peter was asking. Is there something you could do there based on that existing condition?
Okay, that makes a little more sense. So as long as you're going to look at it, see where options are available to, especially, like I said, we're rebuilding that entryway widening for return lanes and things like that. There's a lot of earth being moved there, so a little more isn't going to hurt anything.
Yeah.
I know, it doesn't, it doesn't. I don't mean, I'm not minimizing the fact of, but I'm just saying there is work already.
Yes.
All right, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the audience. If there's any questions on the topic of tonight that we've got is civil and stormwater. I know there's a pretty complex document that's online that everybody's has access to, but if there's any questions that the audience has would like to, new questions, I'm open to. If you could rise, state your name and address and state your concern. And if not, that's okay to serve.
Rick Panal, seventy elbow street. I have a stream in the back of my house.
I have a stream in the back of my house, I'm the elbow of the elbow street, I'm probably the lowest person. Groundwater right there. And I'm concerned that they are gonna have water that's gonna come out of that place, it's gonna go over and. Flood that stream out and flood my house. That's one big concern.
Thank you, sir, that's a concern. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to raise a concern on the topic, ma'am, your name and address, please?
I'm Danielle Moore, more drive, um, relates more to the road work and sort of back to, to traffic.
Okay, we, uh, we're going to hold up on traffic tonight, if, if it's something that. We always invite questions, but if it's related to stormwater, we're trying to focus a little bit on stormwater. Um, is there a question, i- is there something I'd like to phrase to put on the, on the agenda for the next time that we, we talk about traffic?
One hundred percent.
We'll, we'll take, well, we'll put a question and I'll call it a parking lot as we do it at work.
Perfectly fine.
That's okay, thank you.
I know there have been previous discussions about, you know, traffic and accident incidents. Right at the entrance, the existing entrance of the country club. Quick search of police records for the year within the last quarter. And a portion of this quarter, there have been six accidents on that road. Multiple motor vehicles stops, three of which I believe resulted in arrests on spot due to excessive speeding. I think any mitigation that is being proposed needs to take that into account, because any queuing. Is gonna just line everyone up flying around that corner. And frankly, I have family on that road. My husband's grandmother used to live there, people would crash into her trees in her front yard. There was a fatality across the road from her house because they were flying around that corner. I don't think queuing is gonna help. But I, I implore the developer to take a look at some of the police data. Crash data and take that into consideration.
Thank you, and I think we've, we've had, we actually talked a little bit about the queuing and those situations, so when we get back to. Traffic, I'm sure we'll be talking some more about that, thank you for, for the comment, any other concerns from the audience that? Um, are on the topics for tonight? Okay, are there any other concerns from the board? Okay, um, if you're looking to do that, this would probably be appropriate time now.
Right now?
Okay, if you'd like to bring it up?
Yes, um, I wanted to, uh, address the letter. Andrew, that Nixon, he was intended to the board, a month ago, meant to do it last meeting, but it'd be kind of ahead of ourselves. Um, but, uh, first I want to say this, even though it was addressed to the board, these are just my comments, they may and may not agree with me. But they may be ambivalent about it. Um, but the first thing I want to, um, acknowledge is, you know, what the letter is. I guess, uh, you know, in business, I'd call it a shot over the bow, it's, uh. It's telling us what we should do, what we shouldn't do, what we can do, what we can't do. It states the obvious that the project shouldn't be, the application shouldn't be biased, it shouldn't be prejudged. And I would say there's a hint of a legal threat in there as well. Um, and the main reason I want to comment on it, because although I'm not mentioned by name, I'm mentioned by comment. So a few other board members are, are mentioned as well. So, you know, a couple, few of the comments had to do with me, which was, um. Uh, talking about, uh, how the traffic impact report, you know, I mentioned. They're not always correct, it's not a criticism, but they're, they're just not always correct. If they were, we wouldn't have traffic jams where we have them now. Uh, the other comment I made had to do with. Uh, me speeding when I was young down Payne Street. And how other people we should expect for, you know, for, for it to continue. I stand by that comment because I don't think there's gonna be a mass epiphany and all of a sudden people stop speeding down the road. And the last comment I had to do with me saying that density was a problem. Um, and those three comments, along with other comments that board members made. Um, attorney is making an assertion that we're prejudging. The uh, application, which I'll say that is categorically false, it's not being prejudged. Um, my mention about density was tied to traffic, because it's the density. That creates the environment for a thousand plus vehicles, which needs the mitigation, which has been suggested as a light on Payne Street. Which, uh, a, a number of us have, uh, expressed concern about. As far as it creating more problems than it, than it solves and making the street less safe. Um, and I want you to know that when I look at this, um. Obviously, your traffic engineer has done a lot of work, has done a study, um, and a traffic impacted. Um, but the other area that I look at, Andrew, is public comment. Because public comment has something that. Um, you, you can't provide or it can't be substituted, and that's not a bad thing, but what they provide. Is years of experience driving down Payne Street, good weather, bad weather, um, peak hours, non-peak hours, and. Many people have been in town for so long, they've seen how development has impacted the town and the street. And just as an example, I mean, if you look at Bill and I, you know, just the two of us have a combined eighty years. Of experience on Payne Street, and that's not even going into the audience, so if you look at. All of the, the, the people in town that are stakeholders, taxpayers, um, you know. We're talking hundreds of years of experience. Um, and what's valuable for me, just so you know, is looking at what your, your, your traffic engineer is saying. And looking at public comment, because. It tells me if, you know, if the two are close together, you know, I, I get the sense that. Um, you know, we're not gonna be faced with major issues, and sometimes. Public comment will be opposed to what your, your traffic engineer is saying, in this case, I think it's pretty far apart. Um, at this point. But the, what bothers me is that your, your, uh, attorney, when there's, of, when there's. A difference between public comment and, uh, your traffic engineer. That your attorney would want us to dismiss public comment because they are not experts and it's speculation. Um, and I, 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 I won't do that, and I'll tell you why, um, because it's. Their experience, uh, is no less valuable. As your traffic engineer's expertise, and the two of them, I think, are, are needed to come to a. Uh, a decision at some point, and you know, the gap may close over time, or we may agree to disagree. But, but in the end, I, I have approval criteria that we all have to go by. That approval criteria for me is going to include all comments written. You know, or verbal by all stakeholders, you, the people, you know, in town, the taxpayers. So what I'll end up doing at the end of this, um, is looking at all of the information that has been presented. I'll consider it, I'll weigh it, uh, figuratively, and I'll apply it appropriately to the decision criteria. So, you know, that's important for you to know, you know. This hasn't been prejudged, so that's my main point, and I want you to know how I'm looking at this. But the last thing I want to point out, um, is that your attorney went to, you know. Pretty good lengths to, to lecture us on how it would be inappropriate to prejudge this application, which I don't disagree. And we have to go through the whole process. But you know who prejudged it? Your attorney. If you look at the conclusion, she basically states that this special permit. Should be approved, and if it's not approved, she goes so far as to say. That a land court would have no other choice but to overturn the decision, a denial for arbitrary and capricious reasons. So while we plan to go through the entire process and get all of the information, she's basically said. Before we even have gone through this process. You, you gotta approve it, and I, and I think that's, with all due respect, a little bit hypocritical. Um, so I wanted to let you know my thoughts on this. Um, and, you know, she, she clearly has prejudged it, I think, I think it's a bit hypocritical. Um, so, you know, I just wanted to mention it, you know, I'm not offended by this at all, I get it. But I want you to know where I'm coming from, and that was it.
Okay, are either of these attorneys on this letter in the room right now?
Uh, no.
Jennifer Schultz or Michael?
They're, they're not, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
If possible, I, would I be able to?
Can I follow up with what he said?
Actually, I'd like to hear from Bill first and then like to address that.
I agree with what he said. No, try to be a little more delicate right now than I was at the last meeting. We've all lived here. You do a study on a certain day and time. We live here all year round through snowstorms, rainstorms, good weather, bad weather. We know at a certain point, coming back from Providence at night, you may want to avoid Payne Street. We've just seen Payne Street. I've been here forty years. It might have been ill-designed, but. It, it's a very difficult road to add more thing, more items to it. In regards to being prejudged by a board member. I have specifically been very careful to say, and your lawyer addresses this. That, um, this is not what we voted on. And I think that, that is an accurate reflection based on your presentation and what we voted on. Um, so I just want to clarify that. And I'm gonna pick up with the last paragraph of the letter. That Stevens said, his comments are, I believe, correct. Before you presented all your information. The last paragraph says you've been in a court and you're gonna win. And I know it may be procedural letter for you, but, um, we all live here. And as I've said before, you know, we're not Quincy. We're not Summerbell, some of the other towns you built. We're a small, close knit community. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address from the board? All right. And I mentioned I would give you a time to respond.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and Mr. O'Connell, Mr. Goyette, I, I do. First of all, I want to thank the entire board, Mr. Garcia and members of the public for, I know this was a, a special meeting that at our last hearing. The board agreed to, and I know it's a very busy time of year for everybody personally and professionally, so thank you for. Making the accommodations in your personal schedules to, to hold this meeting tonight, so we really do appreciate that. Um, you know, I appreciate the thoughtful comments from, you know, tonight from all the board members, the peer reviewer, the members of the public. And, you know, I think Mr. Goyette, Mr. O'Connell, I, to kind of address both, but, but somewhat, you know, I know they were slightly, um. Uh, you know, they were unique perspectives in their own right, but certainly a lot of parallels, and I think, um. You know, Mr. Goyette, I, I really appreciate your perspective, I appreciate, you know, deliberate and measured nature with which you. Articulated it and that you've engaged in this process, I think, you know, from our standpoint. Um, and Mr. O'Connell, this is something that's very important to us, and, and again, um, you know, we, we. We want you to know, and I know, and I've been saying this for, you know, over two years now, it, it's incumbent upon us to earn the trust and credibility. Of all the stakeholders in the town, not just the planning board, you know, not just select members of the, the public or citizens. Or different boards in this building, and I think, you know, there are many, we don't need to go through the litany now, but many. In town, across the various boards, the various staff, the various departments, neighbors we've met with, the butters we've met with. Um, people's backyards we've walked through, business owners we've met with, is, you know, we, we really have endeavored to. Engage and listen and incorporate that feedback in a meaningful way. Um, you know, I, I, you referenced the overlay, I don't think we need to get into all the intricacies of it right now, but. Regardless of what it says, which is, you know, a much, theoretically a much larger project. You know, where we, we've now been engaged, you know, going back to discussions with. Mr. Frain and his team and Rob's for almost, you know, over two years, coming on three years, and. That, you know, what we came out with a year ago now. Was met, was initially informed by a lot of very thoughtful discussions and input that we had. Now, obviously, the large piece that was missing to that, as we sit, you know, a year ago. Was that the public hadn't had a chance to provide direct feedback to the plan, we got a lot of thoughtful input from. Public works, just planning and engineering, you know, other life safety, other stakeholders at kind of the board and staff level. But obviously, you know, that had been two years of, of kind of. Work in a very technical design sense, and the most important part was to present that to the public and get their input. You know, that is what we submitted around this time last year, early, early, um, twenty twenty-five. And, you know, as we saw, the public certainly had their views, they certainly had their perspective. And, you know, I know there were, um, there were voluntary meetings that were held at large auditoriums. And then there were statutory meetings, I mean, I think we're on our sixth or seventh, you know, formal planning board meeting, um. And, and, you know, I know many of us were, were all in those rooms last February, March, April, May, June, July. Uh, August, September, October, and here we are in November, and I think, you know, um. I mean, I say this in, without sincerity, although I think at a human level, some people, you know, those meetings were. They were blunt, they were direct, and again, we, we, the only way we can make a project that reflects. You know, the experience of those who've lived here for decades, who, that reflects the experience of those who drive down these roads every day. Is to, you know. Get that feedback in those forums, and as we know, those were. Late nights, you know, that went for hours and hours, and again, people, the members of the public were, took time out of their own lives, people, members of the. You know, city, uh, town staff, the planning board, and, you know, just the fact of those folks showing up. And staying there for four hours on a Thursday night, on a rainy Thursday night, on a dark Thursday night. On Thursday nights when they were coming from Little League games and others, you know, that, that is enough to show us. Or what was inherently enough to show us how important this is and how much people care, before we even get to the content of the feedback. So I just want you to know, you know, that, we, we really do, and again, you know, I know there's a perception, you know, I, I don't live in this town. I don't, but, but I acknowledge that from a discernment standpoint, that because I don't live in this town, I need to understand these nuances even better. What we came out with, you know, the first couple of years, you know, with kind of professional staff and, and town input. But, but really what we came out with a year ago, it, it was meant to be day zero, you know, I know, um, folks referenced. Early innings and it certainly was, and it's kind of like you, you have to start somewhere, and no matter where we started, it, we knew it wasn't gonna be perfect. But, but the only way to get there was to put something out and get that feedback. And so I know, you know, we are not in the ninth inning yet, not to, um, further the metaphor. But I really, you know, I think all we would ask, or I'm not here to ask for anything, but. Um, I hope that a reflection of the sanctity with which you treat the public's input is. Uh, reflected from where we started a year ago to where we are now, right, there were sixteen hundred units. There was east and west, there were then fourteen hundred units, then eleven hundred and fifty, then nine hundred and fifty, we're now at eight hundred, so, you know. Eight, fifty percent of where we started. Less than thirty percent of what the overlay, um, you know, technically allows for. But again, we al- also have tried to listen to folks, you know, who had concerns about wildlife on the eastern portion. Stakeholders who, even though they are not residents of Bellingham, I know that this board takes their perspective, you know, seriously in terms of, you know, the wound socket. Um, contingent, folks on Rentham Road where that kind of eastern parcel was gonna dump out to. And understanding some of the pinch points on Rentham Road and why that would be problematic, let alone the amount of excavation. And so, you know, we really have tried to, um, and we're not there yet, but calibrate. A plan that is reflective of, you know, as we all know, you, you can never. Be perfect, and this project is a Rubik's Cube, but that is reflective of the major concerns, and we still have more to, ways to go. But the major concerns, and we've put it in a, you know, in terms of where it's located on the site, it's in an area that is. You know, does not require major disruption in terms of earthwork, tree removal, you know, from a, in terms of the whole three hundred and forty acres. We're disturbing a very small, was it twenty, like, of which is already, you know, disturbed as a. Uh, geotechnical term, meaning it's already kind of flat land. We didn't, we really wanted to minimize, we didn't want to have to cut down trees, remove all the soil, disrupt wildlife. You know, among other concerns that were voiced, so we tried to put it where it have the most benign and limited impact. Um, we tried to put it at a number, um, that was reasonable. And we have tried to design it in a way that it is not seen from the street, we lowered the heights of the building, and again, we still have more to go. And we have tried to design it in a way that it is not seen from the street, we lowered the heights of the building, and again, we still have more to go. But I think, you know, um, Mr. Goyette, Mr. O'Connell, all of the members of the board, Mr. Chair, I think. We 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 understand your perspective, I think my hope, I would just ask that, you know. Where we started to where we've come from, yes, it's from the input of peer reviewers and members of the board, but the large majority of the changes that have been incorporated. Are because of what we've heard from the public, right? There was no peer reviewer that told us to take it from sixteen hundred units to eight hundred units. Um, there there was, you know, no board member that prescriptively told us to take it from sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred units. That was a. Evolution and a reflection of what we heard, you know, last February through our meeting last month, and again, I know we're not there yet. And, you know, I think, um, I know that in terms of. The, you know, the transportation engineers, the civil engineers, the um geotechnical engineers, you know. We are blessed to work with folks who I know the town has a high degree of respect for, you know, I know that the town is familiar with with some of our. Partners on the design engineering side from other town business. I I know that the town's peer reviewers, um, there's a lot of, you know, they are viewed as best in class with a lot of mutual respect between all the parties. And we really are trying to take that mosaic and and have it be reflective of the input we've heard. And, you know, I hear, you know, I didn't write this, I'm not a lawyer, I, you know, and I hear you loud and clear, and I think all we. I think all we want to do is ultimately, there's kind of a balance where just as you say, there's the, there's the four letters of the law. Which in this case is, this is a zoning compliant project, and ultimately should be down to design review. Um, you know, you allude that you want to take into account the public as as should be done. Um, at the same time, you know, we would just want to make sure that we're treated fairly and that the intangibles of, you know. The whole arc of this project, that there's some. Acknowledgement and reciprocity there in terms of the reasonableness and good faith that we've engaged in. And so, again, you know, I know we've talked about civil tonight, there's more traffic to discuss, I know Rob. And in our teams collectively, the towns teams, Rob, our broader teams are continuing to work, and, you know, a- again. This started as a a site identified in the town plan, you know, as three sites to to provide more housing for the town. It's fifty-five plus to allow people to age in place so that they don't have to leave the town or the area, that they can end up in a place that is, you know. Fully ADA compliant, never need to shovel again, never need to mow a lawn, and but get to stay in in Bellingham. With as minimal impacts as possible to, you know, um, everybody else, so we're not there yet. Um, and, you know, I, Mr. Goyette, Mr. O'Connell, all the members of the board would ask just that, you know, would. And I think, again, the only way for us to have made these changes is to hear from you and the public, and so we're going to continue. And we want this to be something that's created in the image of all of the stakeholders, um, you know. We we don't want to be judged on having to be perfect or having to solve every. Every item, every comment, because at some point they they conflict with each other, um, but I think we're trying to keep. The overall trajectory and arc of the major concerns mitigate them to the best we can possible. And we're just, as you have, I believe everybody on the board has been professional, and um, we just ask that as this process continues. Um, for that reciprocity to continue, you know, that good faith and reasonableness reciprocity to continue.
I just, I'll quickly, I just quickly say that. Uh, we recognize the changes that have been made over the months, but we. Still want, well, I still want you to understand that as the project stands now, it's still. The largest project to ever come in front of the town of Bellingham resident from a residential standpoint in Bellingham's entire history. So, you know, I just want you to still recognize that, it's still a very, very large project. Um, and the last thing I just want to reiterate is that if public comment doesn't agree with whatever's being presented. Um, as long as you understand that, that doesn't mean it should be dismissed as it's said in this letter. That I won't, you know, public comment just won't be dismissed because it's it's doesn't line up with, you know. With what you're looking for, um, it doesn't mean that public comment controls the entire process. But in the end, i- it just, it shouldn't be dismissed.
And I appreciate that, and hopefully the, you know, the magnitude of the many changes were made is reflective that public comment is being. Incorporated and listened to.
Yeah, Liz?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, um. You know, I've been doing this a long time, um, I don't have, always have tons of questions, I don't always have a lot to say, but I'm always. Analytical in my thinking and taking in all the information and letter, no letter, five people, five hundred people. I will review the project the same way that I reviewed every project that's come before me, so I don't. I'm not ambivalent, but if there was no letter, I'm doing the same process that I'm doing for every project that comes before me. So, um, you know, I don't think that. There should be a concern of unfairness, at least from my perspective, because. The letter doesn't mean, and it's not going to cause me to act or do anything differently than I normally do, so. That's.
I think just one, you know, on that, I think just from our standpoint too, right, we are endeavoring to listen, to incorporate. But at the same time, you know, there's kind of, we we, and I'm not suggesting this is happening, but this is a concern, or this would be. Is, we we just don't want to feel like the goalposts are moving on us, right? The the parameters and requirements of a special permit. For instance, on traffic, say, we need to do all of these things with our engineer, the town's peer reviewer has to do all of these. And and, you know. When we do those. It it's, we we, you know, we've done with the special permit and what the planning board has asked us to do, and and we just don't want those. It doesn't mean that the public comment has to be completely dismissed, but at the same time, you know. A prescribed process from this planning board that we faithfully execute with two. Highly regarded engineers that the town has used over and over, we just can't have that empirical analysis dismissed if the results. Uh, you know, when when they verify each other's work, I mean, you know, it it that that it just can't be dismissed. And um, and, you know, we're we're doing what we have been asked by the board, and we just don't want there to be. You know, the 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 rules, the the goalposts moved on us.
Yeah, I mean, I I only speak for myself, and I I certainly don't dismiss the data, so um. You know, I I think. You know, I guess we'll all both have to trust each other that we're going to act appropriately and, you know. Continue on and follow mass general law and follow all of the things that we need to do, and I'm tasked with reviewing the project, I'm going to review the project.
Yeah, and and you know, A- Andrew, there's some, o- obviously, you know, there there's items that are black and white. You know, that either they're met or they're not met, uh, and like, and and as it relates to traffic, um. You, we don't know what's going to happen with traffic until the project is up and running. And, you know, and at that point, that's when we find out um, how close we were on a traffic impact report. So, you know, for, at least for me, you know, that's the one thing that we really don't know. Until it's up and running, so, and for me, public comment was in this regard. Is just as important for me as it is the traffic engineer's expertise, so, um. So that part is, you know, we just never know until it's up and going. So, that's it.
Alright, um. I'm going to point out that this is the second meeting that we've scheduled outside of our normal schedule that we set in the year. We also set one in August as well, so, we put that on the record as well, um. And you mentioned ADA compliance, that's another one of the things in the fourteen-page documents. Sidewalks, there's a lot of work here in my opinion, um. That you commented on even after our peer review got off, that need to be looked at, um. At this point, is there any other things on civil and stormwater, Rob, that you think we need to cover?
No, I mean, tonight was the overview of the, that initial report, I think. John, you alluded to maybe a working session, which I think is a great idea, we've do that all the time, so. I think that would be helpful, um, as you move forward, um.
This looks like a a lot of work to me as far as that's concerned, especially over the holidays, um. One meeting in December, then one meeting in December.
Well, I think. Prop, most likely what's going to happen is we'll do the a working session and then work through kind of the the. An extra revised plans that I assume which should hopefully address, or at least um, respond. To the T E C comments in the civil aspect, but then also some of the traffic ones as well, because there were some site plan related. Situation, so, holistically, um, you know, I'll be moving forward, I think with that next submission. Need a little bit of time, I think, to work through the working session.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, we have, I think it's. If you're talking, I don't know exactly what would be work for your timeframe, but I know we have. The next meeting is December eleventh, I mean, we can meet next Thursday, I can bring the turkey and.
You'll be here all by yourself.
Do it turned up.
Think about the jokes a lot here.
Yeah, we're we're not doing that.
We're not doing that today.
Yeah, so December.
So, December eleventh, we do have at least one other.
It's a.
Column there.
December eleventh is a pretty sizable agenda, we have at least three items on there, um, which then, you know, I. Do you not recommend a second meeting in December, especially with the way that the the schedule falls with the. You know, December twenty-fifth.
Let's ask the question, to me, it feels like a lot of work, but wh- when do you think you could be ready to come back and talk about? Either the civil or the, I know there's a lot of issues still on the streets, um, traffic.
Yeah, I I mean, again, thank you very much for the special meeting tonight. You know, I do think we could come to the December meeting with progress to be made, because at this point, there's a lot of parallel paths running with the different peer reviews. Um, you know, I think, um, in the sounds of it, it sounds like a full agenda, I certainly wouldn't. Want to uh put forth a special meeting to the board, uh, again, next month, so I I think we could work with the. Maybe the first January meeting, if that would be reasonable.
You have a January still open?
Yeah, uh, right now, it's just one meeting, which I think we continued, uh, one of the items to January fifteenth. But I think we could accommodate.
I'm one of the Januaries.
I feel pretty confident, I mean, I was in January eighth or fifteenth. So we continued one of the meetings to the fifteenth, I think on this agenda, we had January eighth on here, but I think January fifteenth is actually the correct one. Okay, that's, that explains it, so January fifteen. Okay.
Okay, so, so if we did go to the fifteenth, which would you be prepared to work on? Traffic or what we did tonight?
You know, I think we may follow up with Rob on the specific scope, I mean, I think we would be grateful to be put on that agenda, I think the truth is, given that some of the scope is. Narrowing on each of the fields, I mean, as you allude to and reference, there's still a lot of work to do. But I, you know, I think there's a chance we may be able to, especially given, you know, now that we're going to have. Six weeks to do work, I think we could potentially do traffic and and civil, I know water and sewer is coming, we've been waiting for sewer, so. I maybe, if we could maybe earmark the agenda for us to be on the fifteenth, and we'll work with Rob on the specific scope, um. Certainly well in advance, so everybody has noticed, but, given how far out it is.
Here, here review. Funding, there need to be looked at?
I think from the civil side, it's fine, I just have to look at the traffic, so, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll get with you guys on.
Yeah, and we're happy to provide any incremental funding this, yeah.
Where's our decision deadlines and?
Well, it's a special permit, so you don't have to worry about that, development plan approvals, those are the ones that you got sixty cases.
Worry about that, alright. Um, so you can. Board have it, any concerns of moving it to first meeting in June?
Yeah, I think that gives them some good time to have working meetings to narrow. The fourteen pages.
Okay.
Minimize the time, maybe five.
Alright, then, uh, is there any other comments? Alright, then I would accept a motion to Wednesday fifteen.
Yeah, continue to January fifteen.
Okay, lead by Bill, second by Liz, Steve with the vote.
Steve, I.
Liz, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
By the eye.
Alright, that's positive, we'll see you in June.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, we're showing up.
And I guess Christmas.
We'll be talking before Christmas.
In a certain way, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to uh thank the public for coming in tonight, I know that uh. This has been all for a while, please keep coming. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Thanks for your time, Mr. O'Connell. Alright, you as well, I appreciate it, thanks for the feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, holiday, I really do appreciate. Yeah, I'll be in the office tomorrow. Thanks so much for your special mindset.
Alright, Thanksgiving. Okay. Sounds good.
Alright.
Oh, probably nice.
I showed up to see you at your office.
Uh, well, so.
We still have, uh.
We actually have a meeting going.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to talk to you about.
Yeah.
Well, is there a time that you'd like to set up for?
Well, I'll just stop by and see.
Okay, and then tomorrow morning.
My work is a lot, wasn't it?
Give me a call, you've got a lot to sell, okay?
Alright, thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All days, we don't want it.
Alright, so we have the approval of the minutes from October twenty-third. Does everybody have a chance to review the revisions?
Yeah, there's just a couple tweets from some comments.
Was I supposed to get a new title?
Uh, that was on the. That would be in the meeting minutes, right?
No, yeah, wasn't that the pre?
That was, that was the the yearly report, if I remember.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was the yearly report, which I'm assuming happened.
Do you want a new title?
No.
If you want, Director of Planning and Engineering, you can have it.
How about Assistant Two?
Yeah, yeah, Assistant to the Director of Planning and Engineering.
I think Amy already has that role.
No, no, Assistant Two.
She's the assistant.
Amy is the boss.
Okay, oh, I didn't, I didn't see anything else.
Was the title of the second, um, without going too far, was the title of the second, um, thing voted on that night? Still accurate, you weren't even talking about that?
I am, I mean, like.
What?
What? Hold on. What?
The title of what?
Pass that over to him, about bottom of the page, oh, I want to read.
Red lines, red.
Yeah, we.
That was the second one, right?
The voting is amended. You know, the part of the amendment, right, but the word special on it, I think is, that's.
That that's you, oh, uh, hold on one second, so.
And I'm asking because it might have been voted, it might have been on the document, so.
Yeah, it's.
It is on the document.
Yeah.
Alright, then we will, and then it is what it is.
Yep.
Alright, then, uh.
Just so, just for clarity, for open meeting law purposes, so at the bottom, there is a motion made. Stated from, it was Bill O'Connell to approve the special residential use townhouse dwelling development plan and stormwater management decision. Which I think your question, Phil, is related to, is that special use. Is special need to be in there because it, is it referring to the special permit, but the zoning, um. The zoning, the section in our zoning bylaws for this application is the special residential use.
So it does come.
So it, that's just the name of the the zone, but it was a good question, because I think. You you asked me and I said.
Yeah, I just.
Doesn't sound right.
Passing that one.
Yeah.
Alright, if is there, is there any other questions on the meeting minutes? Then I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October twenty-third. Made by Steve. Marty. Liz Beech, second by Liz, um, and we'll start the vote, Marty.
Marty, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Liz, I.
You then.
Okay, so the motion to pass the uh meeting minutes passes, and do we have any other business on the agenda?
No, uh, just, you know, next meeting's December eleventh, um, oh, there is one item, actually, me one second. Um. I can send the details, but I wanted to see if you're available, um. December fifteenth, let me go back, we did receive an application for the associate member. Um, I'll send you guys the application, um, but it looks like the select board. Um, I'll send you guys the application, um, but it looks like the select board is meeting December fifteenth. Needs to be a joint appointment, I don't know if everyone is available perhaps to. Meet on December fifteenth with the select board to to do the the interview when.
So we want.
Okay, and I'm sure, you know, they do have the remote capabilities too, so if people wanted to zoom in, you can do that too.
What?
I actually have it on my calendar already, I don't know why.
Oh, okay.
What time is that?
Um, it's seven, because it's a select board meeting.
I assume we may be early on in the agenda.
I would hope so.
Okay.
They usually do that first, don't they?
Usually, yeah.
If we could.
Ask to have that on the first on the agenda then.
Did you ask Calorie to make sure that that is first?
Yeah, that's, that won't be a problem.
Yeah, I'll be there or I'll zoom in.
Okay.
Do we have a, do we have a, um. A resume at this point?
Yeah, I'll send you all the application.
Is it a new application?
It's a new application, you know. We had the, I think his first name is Patrick, the. An engineer of some sorts, a mechanical engineer or something, a smart engineer.
Wicked smart.
Wicked smart. So, anyway, um, yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up.
At a public safety, when will we these be discussed in the open meeting? That's.
I don't want to go, I don't want to go too much into, uh, it's already been continued, but.
Right, I'm just asking procedurally, is this go, is that public safety a separate category kind of at night meeting?
I would.
Okay.
I would.
I would want the chiefs here to.
I, I agree, that's, I know it was in the packet, because I read it and I've read through them and I'm like. All right, well, talking about stormwater, yet it was in the Dropbox, so I was just like, okay, is it kind of just? As info.
These things were issued, uh, I just put them in the Dropbox, did I just receive them, and I would say. Um, just from a procedural standpoint, I am not going into the the meat and potatoes of any application. That is currently in front of the act of the board, but um, I would recommend. That at a meeting when the chiefs are there and the DPW director, that may also be a good point to discuss utilities.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, that's.
I just want to wish you all happy holiday.
Yeah.
Uh, Rob, don't burn down, down hall when you're cooking.
Yeah, I'm gonna try not to, like, for ducking.
Or you're gonna try to burn again.
Okay.
All right, so if I want to move it over to the senior center, because there's a kitchen there.
There is a brand new one.
It's wonderful.
Yeah. It's true.
Wow.
Point.
All right, so with that note, how about a motion to uh, the meeting, made by Marty? We have a second, second by Steve, all in favor, Marty.
Marty, I.
Bill I.
Bill on.
Liz I.
Steve I.
And meeting is now adjourned, thank you everybody, thank you.